I'm gonna go up to the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, I think I signed all of these things.
Oh, for you? The appointments.
Do you have anything for us, Karen?
I'm gonna go a little back.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. When we can finally let us go to page or send us feedback. I don't think something's gonna be different.
I wonder if they're still getting their appointments.
Meeting minutes for today from last week's meeting?
Oh, yes, there are. Let me go and print them off. All right, I'm sorry. I went in there to-
You just like doing trips, huh?
My gosh, I went to get an agenda for-
You're gonna get funny passes. You're gonna just email us real quick?
I have one.
Yeah.
Can you sign this?
Yeah, I know, it's three. Sure. We're starting to do four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Hey, I heard from some people that it wasn't live last week. You know anything about that?
Uh, it was live.
What?
Because Denise has the video, so Denise has the video that we did on live. It got downloaded from YouTube, sure, right?
Yeah.
You can do, how long? Oh, I'll come down see. Hey, the website got updated with the meeting minutes and the video.
Uh, that's Denise's thing.
Yeah.
That's Denise's thing.
She volunteers, so she's behind the last minutes of her 23rd.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to-
That's good mention, that's fair.
Right, pretty behind.
Yes, people can request, come down and request if they really want to make you come down and you can get a copy of them at Town Hall, even if they're not on the website, but they should be if that's what our policy is. Something like that.
How many fingers am I holding on?
I'm wearing my eye, I don't know. Dialation.
Yeah, it's coming down.
Well, actually, gone two times at the hall. They look a little glossy. They look a little glossy. Yeah, they probably still have a little bit. It would seem kind of off.
When'd you have your eyes checked? When?
This morning.
I had mine done last night, and I still can't see straight.
Really?
Oh, it's just watering.
No, it's good.
Was there a danger in the value?
Minutes of non-public meetings must be kept and must be available to Mary. Must be available to the public upon request on a business day. If this means the hours of meeting are excluded.
I drove home without sunglasses on. Looking away from the sun.
Yes, yeah.
I had mine on, it was brutal because of the sun. It was so brutal.
What happens when you get old?
I gotta carry two. That I can't seize, and I really can't seize.
Oh, yeah.
I'm still passing the driver's license test, but barely.
How is everybody doing with the folders? Mary, you almost done or is it?
Well, we've done it too. The only thing you can't do with the minutes, I think, right now, because nobody's seen it.
And I've signed all the stuff, okay. Okay. So, the action items, we have the payroll manifest, any questions on that? Okay, I did ask for questions for Karen, but she's not here, so I'll ask her now. Letter of hire, the request for reimbursement, letter to the applicants, vacation slip. The new business was the inventory form, I kind of reviewed that. I thought that was interesting, did anyone take a look at that?
For which?
The inventory form of the last week. Karen had asked us to sign our, I think that she had signed that we do not use the inventory form, so I asked her to include the inventory form, so everyone could review it, so you could see what questions it asks the people that live in town. I thought that was very interesting, I was kind of interested to what everybody thought of that. I don't know any kind of things, but I've seen it. So if you could take a look at it, that would be good. Um, the temporary mobile home.
I think that, that actually goes to zoning board.
Yeah, so, um, how do we officially, are you gonna just send that to the zoning board, Karen, or-
Send them a letter.
How do we officially do that since it looks like it requires the board's-
Or maybe, maybe Karen can put it on the agenda, or have you put it on the agenda?
I would send them a letter if the board agrees that it should go before zoning for Rita to continue to stay there, then I would write a letter and explain that situation. Yes, and that's okay, this is all public information, so if the board believes that she should have to go to zoning board to get approval, because that's the new zoning regulation for these temporary mobile homes.
Will zoning put any contingencies on it or restrictions on it as far as timeframe? Or if they approve it, will they just last forever, or how's that work?
The ordinance says that it provides temporary housing for as long as the immediate family member is, you know, remains in the house or in the mobile home.
So what they've done is, you know, in the parent's guy, they were supposed to get everything, so the father died, and now they have another immediate member moving into the mobile home, and now the mother's getting, it's passed away shortly. So now she wants to stay in the mobile home as immediate member of the person who owns the house and the property. So she's asking if she can stay here because they've already spent all kinds of money. I don't know if we start putting her in the house, but-
I don't know exactly where it is.
Yeah, so they wanted to just try and stretch it out as long as they possibly can.
I guess what they thought was, it was supposed to be temporary.
Right.
Beginning with.
I know, but that's why I'm wondering if it should be something zoning should take care of.
And there's not a settlement as well.
Yes.
So even if it stays until this one comes, when the next one takes it out.
Looks like it's because they want, they want it to stay for a long time. Oh, um, so, um, Ed, do you have a question?
No, I have no question, I have something to tell you.
Oh.
In most cases, applications like this, it's a humanitarian thing to do. Perfectly understandable that you have an elderly parent who you want to stay close to or they want to stay in their home, you grant these things. It's not unusual, this is not unique, and we've already spent more time talking about it than it really deserves.
Well, I guess the point is that that's not the case is what's going on, Ed.
Well, what is the case? I haven't seen, I haven't seen the application yet.
The two parents are gone or will be gone very, very soon, and the children have taken all of the premises and it's being passed down to the family.
That's a different story.
Right.
I would, I would urge that you pass this on to zoning.
To the zoning board.
Let them deal with it.
Thank you.
All right, Ed. Sometimes I wonder, I waste time.
And I'm still waiting to see folders.
All right, well, I asked everybody if they were all set with the folders, and you said you were.
No, I didn't say a thing, Lori. I did not say a single word, but now I'm telling you I have not seen the folders.
Okay.
Is that clear?
Let's give them the folders, people.
Thank you.
It really should be completed before the meeting starts.
Okay, so, um, so the temporary mobile home, just, so we send it to, send a letter to the zoning board and let them know that we'd like them to make a determination on that?
I'll send a-
And then does it come back to us, people?
No, I send a letter to the property owner and let them know that they're gonna have to go before the zoning board. And so then I will follow up and make sure that they've made the appointment with the zoning board.
So they have to do that.
Right, and you will know what happens because you'll have Gary. Gary is your representative on zoning, so he'll be able to report back to you.
Follow up with that, Gary. Now, just out of curiosity, since they sent us, since we're aware of this, whoever falls up if they don't contact the zoning board, just how does that work?
Well, that's why we're going to follow, follow up monthly, and I will give a copy of that letter to the secretary of zoning or to Mary Jane, and so she will check with the chairman to see if they've applied. Now, the permission was given to the parents, and there is still one parent still residing there.
Right.
So the issue shouldn't really have to go before zoning until that parent is no longer there.
But in the letter, it says that she's-
The request is to-
For the, right, for the new per, the newer person to stay.
The letter should go to someone.
Yes, all right.
Okay.
And you'll see the, a copy of the letter, definitely.
All right, can I go back to letter of hire? Letter of hire, yes.
Did the letter of hire, the person accept the petition?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, anything else on the action items? Ed, anything else on the action items?
No.
All right, we're in new business. Did everyone have a chance to look at the inventory form? Can you, can we talk about that when you have had a chance to look at it? I'm just curious what everyone thought about that. The letter from the Lickit Commission, does anyone have any comments or concerns about that?
Have they received any complaints, any, no, in reference to the back door?
No, we haven't received them.
They worked with the SAU, and the SAU said as long as they just appear in line, they're good for now. And so that's what they did.
Yeah, and I, I think that's done. Do we respond, or we do nothing? Have to test to inform us?
Uh, no, the letter says if you would like to provide comments, they will take that under advisement before they issue the license, so if the board is okay.
I think we're all good.
Okay.
I'm good, is everyone else good? Everybody good?
I'm good, bud.
Yep. Um, then there was a reimbursement for the old tasters. Just have to go around. Um, I think that's fine, right?
Yeah.
Um, that was reimbursed for what, eight hundred bucks?
Yes, he was, he was hoping to get more, but-
Town beach water tests? I'm surprised I'm reading that, that was okay, right?
Is that something we do every year?
Uh, we do it, we do it monthly while the beach is open.
Oh, monthly?
Yes.
So often somewhere monthly?
Yes, and-
Do we do just that beach, or do we do, well, that's-
We, it's the only town beach that's used.
Well, we got another one on Narrows.
The Suncook, the Suncooke Lakes Association does their own testing all the way from the town beach, all the way down both sides of Upper Suncooke, at the, at the Narrows, at the bridge, and all the way down through, all the way to the Valley Dam. Frankly, the, the testing that they're doing is a heck of a lot more informative than the testing here, that Eastern Analytical, I, I, I looked at the whole thing, and I can't tell you what the coal form counts are or anything else about it.
So why are we doing it?
It's a hell of a-
We, we have to do water tests for our town because it's a town property, it's a town beach.
Is it Narrows a town beach?
It's open to the residents as a town beach, and that's-
Narrows, that's on the same lake?
Off White Oak, right. It's all the same lake.
Oh, it's all the same.
It's all the same lake.
Who knows finally did it?
It's all the same lake, but we have not gone specifically to that lot and tested because it's never been advertised as a town beach.
Right.
Because of the private deed and rights, so.
Okay. Um, the highway department weekly schedule, generated testing reports, do we do those every month? That doesn't cost us anything, does it?
It does, it's in the budget, and they do it twice a year. And they perform maintenance and make sure that they're all working, so when we lose power, we continue to work.
Did they come out and look at the one at the fire station?
Yes, uh, not the parade station, because that is not a generator that we purchased. That's, the maintenance and work is done separately on that one. It's not, it wasn't purchased through generator connection. And that's being serviced through, it will be with our insurance company, part of the lightning strike issue.
Okay.
So that will be all included in that insurance claim.
But the parade is on the monthly testing, or no?
No.
No, the parade, no. Only this one.
All right, I'm gonna go to our appointment right now, because is this Eddie George?
No, I'm Rusty.
Rusty, is this our five thirty?
That is the five thirty. This is your fire warden.
Rusty, not George. Says G, I thought it was George. Come on over.
You'll have two Georges.
I never said it all straight.
Make sure she says Rusty from now on.
I never said it all straight, she all know.
Okay.
Well, Rusty, Rusty is reserved for long time acquaintances. Professionally speaking, he is George Kraus. Yes.
You are absolutely correct, you just got to be taking half of my present leave.
There you go.
My doctor's bad. Look, that's the problem, you know, when you live in town all of your life, and you have people that have known you since you were a little and blah, right, Karen?
Absolutely.
And they were looking for him, and then somewhere around the fifth grade, I had a teacher decide that we were gonna go by now, certainly, and that was it. No more.
Are you getting something out, or not?
Sure.
Well, dealing with COVID, I wanted to make sure I didn't get too close, and I didn't do anything that was going to upset anyone. Um, you bet. You?
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
You bet. Would you like fun as well? Yeah. There you go.
So now I'll kind of start and pull them headed after the test, fun. Um, some time ago, I started to notice that there seemed to be a misconception or misunderstanding or lack of understanding of what the forest fire warden position was, what the responsibilities are, and, and how we go about doing our business. So it's, just to give you a quick overview. State of New Hampshire, Division of Forests Land, which I believe has now changed to, oh boy, I forget, something they may have changed, anyhow, is responsible for forest fire protection. And as part of their organization, there has always been, since I remember before, a state-appointed local fire warden for every community. And the Board of Selectmen, every three years, the appointment is up for community appointment, and during that process, one of the processes is that the Board of Selectmen have the ability to make a recommendation in agree to or disagree with moving someone forward. And I've served in this position since nineteen ninety-six, and I continue to adapt as the position changes, because for those that aren't familiar, forestry and wildland are grass fires and brush fires. When I lived a little while younger, like in high school, the high school had a forest fire team that would get activated in our class, we were good ways to get out of class, and we would jump into the back of the property, we'd go for a brush fire to assist the fire back, because at that point in time, all fire departments were strictly volunteer, and you never knew what you were gonna get, and young men were always a popular choice to put a fire down on the back track on line, so that's how it became. And all of that was a, if it was an event, a brush fire, wildland fire, grass fire, those were billable events that the, the town process was built through from the forest fire warden who submitted it, and then the state picked up fifty percent of the cost. So that it was, it was, it was a management process for the forest fire warden to do on an admin basis. With the change that we've seen over the last few years especially, where there are very few people that are interested in being volunteer firefighters today, unfortunately, it's a tragedy, but it's reality, and the stations being covered primarily now with staff that's paid, the whole process changed because the only people that could get paid on the program were those that were volunteers. People on duty getting paid is on duty firefighters could not get the inverse, so it was, they were kind of interested, especially recently. But the knives that we did is really a burning permit process, is what we really managed, and we, it becomes somewhat simpler with the COVID-19 helped out a little bit more and pushing people to realize that, okay, look, coming down to the fire station, which had been, well, since I started, the place for issuance of permits primarily, with the stations and the issues dealing here, the online permit process, the state put in place here several years ago, had been, had been the saving for having the process go well simply. And people today, they don't mind the three dollar charge to get a permit. So we have, I'm getting there every time a permit is issued under the online permit system, and I can tell you that at early spring, I became a little bit concerned because I found that everybody in their brother, because kids were home, they wanted something, an activity, so they were getting permits for cooking fires. Camp cooking fires are able to be kinked at any time during the twenty-four hour day. Camp fire and open burning is only after five o'clock night and healthy for the night and the next morning, and we can, or whenever, you can kink it during the day when it's raining. And raining is really raining, not just, I think it's gonna rain, but I said it, raining, you would wanna have some sort of umbrella or something to keep you protected. And what I gave you was a guidance that we have for that everybody who signs a permit online has to check the boxes and reach it, all right? And so it doesn't put any extra liability on the community, because we have the option of going out and inspecting, but who knows, that's not done because it's, it's, it hasn't proven yet to be an issue. Oh, by the way, anytime I'm talking, if you want a question, just ask, ask it right off. Don't, don't tell me you don't want it.
Yeah, hey, it should be.
I don't blame you, I don't know. But, but, so that's, that's the process, so we have cooking fires, which are capable, you can do it any time, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, unless we get into a red flag day and we have to notify anybody, but it's on the, you know, burning's off, all right? And then there's camp fires, which are, again, those are small fires that can be closer to a house because of the restrictions on how much size of the fire area. And then the open burning is the one where you get the fire, you don't have to rush off and you burn. Now, the problem right into it is all of our burning regulations are for natural wood. There is no burning of trash, there's no burning of painting materials, there is no burning of pressure treated, there is no burning of anything that's light tires and wiring and all that stuff, plastic products and petroleum products. And it all, those all, that whole regulation is driven by D E S, it's all they call, all right? And although we're the ones that did all, our enforcement is really for the open burning side, it's not for the equal, although we have to notify the proper authorities and the process. And so that's where we've been involved with the requirements, and the biggest requirement we have to watch for is people that are having land cleared, like a lot, and a logger comes in and piles everything known to man in a big pile, they had a brush on the top, and underneath, we have too high material because we can't burn anything that's lighter than tires and diano. Anything lighter than that has to be dealt with some other way, or people pile stuff up, and next thing we know, the reason for that is that lighter materials take longer to burn, and consequently, if you, you can't leave a fire, you have to extinguish it, and the only way you can extinguish it is to put it out with a lot of water or let it burn out, watching it all occurring, and you can't bury it, that's illegal. So we have some various, you know, guidelines that are very rigid, that's all we have to worry about. Any questions? No, okay, that'd be good. So as we move along, the other reason for being here is that I've got two appointments that I'm trying to complete for replacement of some people. We had some folks that have retired, who are no longer able to respond because of other conditions, and so I'm looking there, in the process of authority, the fire, forest fire warden is the ultimate responsibility for the community, and under that person is deputy fire wardens, and then beyond that, the people that can issue permits are called official meetings. And each one of those positions has a certain set of responsibilities and rules and guidelines for their operation. So I'm wanting to appoint two new deputies to replace that I need. The, the, the process here is that where the fire department is really the pool of resource we utilize, and that's where all of the equipment resides, and a forest fire warden doesn't, isn't an equipment person, he was a management person, and in that case, the, the deputy wardens are able to get someone up that has the responsibility and understands the training, because there is required training annually for any deputy warren, warden. They understand the rules, regulations of the forest fires in this area, as well as the responsibilities for the paper, and there's tons of paper, because when we go on forest recall, workers can't follow the state, it comes away from the town. All right, so that we have to make sure that we know who's in and who's working this incident, and we'll know when they, when they are there and when they're not, so that we have to manage that. So the two people I have looking to, uh, put in that deputy warden position is, first off, is Deputy Chief Pullen, Al Pullen. Al, as you know, and probably know as well as I do, retired out of the city of Manchester. In Manchester, he was deputy warden, but even though he was deputy warden in Manchester, that doesn't get in the coverage, he's a wire sit, all right, so I'm looking to appoint him. And I'm looking also to appoint Will Blackell. Will had, for those that go back, in nineteen ninety-seven, when we had instituted full-time operations for fire rescue. Will and I were, we brought that program forward, and Will managed the full-time operation for me while I was chief, and he's served on, and what he was retired out of Concord, but he served the state of New Hampshire in responses to other states across the country for wildland response, so he's got a really good background experience-wise, and- So he's got a really good background in experience-wise and he made us. So I was looking for, you have, I'm asking you to approve these two and, and I can then bring them forward to the, to the state with your recommendations.
I'll make a motion that we approve for deputy fire warden. Deputy Chief Al Pullen and Will Barthaus.
Second.
Where should I leave these for signature?
Is it signatures for the whole board or one?
On chairman.
Just the chairman, so the motion can be to have the chairman sign? Yes.
So the motion that board signs to the...
Wait, that's an appointed position?
State appointed.
State appointed.
State appointed?
Yes.
So, any discussion? I have a second discussion.
He's already acting deputy, correct?
Yes. Uh, fire chief. Deputy fire chief.
Right.
Okay.
Not, this is different.
This is different?
Yeah, how much, how much time, I think what he's trying to get at is, what, what is the responsibility and time, time commitment for this position?
Uh, the responsibilities for, and I know I wasn't talking about, so I can, I can interrupt that conversation. The issue is that he, because he's not living in town, and his response from Lincoln is probably not going to happen on a regular basis. It would really be, so that while he's here, he can act in the efficient capacity, since he's serving as the deputy fire chief, in the efficient capacity to handle wildland all as deputy warden. And he would have the ability to utilize the resources of state forest lands if there were the need for extra resources. Typically, the resource that I'm really referring to is the daylight office. Well, if we get into a major incident that will require, because of location or scope or whatever, the chopper activity, and that's, you have to go through the state because at $5,000 now, I don't think the town would absolutely mistake that responsibility. So we have to follow process, due process, and have the state, uh, Forest Ranger on duty and on scene. So that just gives him that, that ability to be able to...
My concern is that, you know, most of those events would be emergency, not the best. And where he's waiting for Lincoln, who, who knows if he's even going to have the ability to perform those, those duties.
It, it really is, it's putting the safety net together, all right? Lately, since February, I've been in town every day. I don't go anywhere. You know, I'm often traveling four days, four nights a week, I'm having travel to February. All right? And that's why we have multiple. Right now, Nick Oakes, the deputy warden, Sean's the deputy warden, John Drew's the deputy warden, all right? Gary Dusek was, but because of Gary's situation, you know, I'm, I'm looking to put Will in this place, you know, and I'm not trying to build a big group of people, but I'm trying to build enough so that when a call happens, 24 hours a day and seven days a week, there is someone that can, will, will be, should be available. And that's Will's...
That's like five deputies. I, I can't imagine you needing another one.
It's the fire center or down at county?
It's the fire center.
Not for down at county, no? So that's...
No, but what you're saying is, 26 hours per week that Al Pullen is here, if a call happens to come in, he's here. That's something with the gist of having him have the ability, where instead, if George's out of town, Will Barthaus is down the cake, Al Pullen is here, so he's able to respond. So it's basically only, we probably think he's actually physically in, or instead that...
We've had a number of calls this year, and we kind of added home with the, the old pile of pretty many, but...
Because what I'm saying is you have several already, and I don't understand the need.
It, it, it's a matter of, there's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365, and people do other things. And, you know, it's not like we're loading up. Al understands his responsibility, like it's a matter of trying to, I mean, look, look at it, Sean, Sean, very, I haven't seen him on a call this year, all right? I haven't seen Nick on a call this year, all right? Even though we had that fire up on Welteroe that was like a 6:00 PM call, you know, went to about 9:30, 10:00 o'clock. And the only one that showed up was Rocky Tasters. And he's recovering from some major surgery, so he was like, "Hey, how you doing there? I mean, I'm doing just fine." So it, it's not, it's not overload. I think that's one of the things that's like, you've got to have the ability to have field command. And, and when it gets to a point, you know, that I gotta leave, you know, and we have the ability of others to come in.
So are your other deputy wardens not, not, I mean, do you have like a system where you call, you know, you just listed a whole bunch of names that we know? Do you call this one, this one, this one in a row? Is there like a chain of command or how does that work?
Good question. It works the same way the fire department does. When a call comes in, the page goes up and you either respond or don't respond, depending on one person's situation, who we located, you know, what's going on with you.
Have you talked to all the deputies right now and making sure that they still want to be active as deputy wardens?
I'm, I'm working through that. The appointments from the previous ones that are like mine is expiring here in this year, so it's up for renewal. And that's one of the things, that's why, you know, Gary Dusek, Gary, unfortunately, is, is kind of not available at all. Rodney Boyd was another one, and Rodney, you know, can't do it. So, you know, those people have been, you know, as time, as it presents itself, it's not a high-stress job, it's not a high demand job. We don't go out here today, we go out...
Rusty, what's the status of John Drew?
Uh, I've been in touch with John Drew, but I didn't want to get in the middle of a personnel, didn't matter, and, and get my two cents into it.
Come on, so I can mention this.
Until I, until I, until I had the confidence, and so I talked to Sean and, and worked with, you know, letting, letting kind of guy in there.
Good luck.
Okay.
Okay, so we, we have a...
Thanks for asking.
We have a motion and a second, and any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I, against, abstaining, I think we're good. So you made a motion for me to sign, right?
I appreciate you taking the initiative. Let me do a little bit of a discussion about what the scope of the forest fire service is. Hopefully, as you know, I am always interested in trying to continue to promote and, and provide information, historical sometimes, if necessary. Because the way I entered the fire service was in forestry, and the reason I ended that was up on Shackford Road, the power company had power lines going off through the middle of the woods that were lack, lacking maintenance, I guess you might say. The tree had gone up after the naval order had gone, and that was not uncommon for those power lines that were pulling in early, back when we had electrification happening. And it's not a good fire up there, and I was a member of the scout, the first scout responding by the fire company. So we had not a lot of interaction. Even though I was still a deep trainer, which I was a little young, a couple of us went up and provided a little bit of support. I'm not sure if it was meaningful, but they bought it, it was good, so it went up, right? And from there, when I turned 16, I became a member of the fire department. So I've had just a little experience and it continues to be in my blood.
Little experience.
Thank you for your service, Rusty.
But, you know, we, we've all been pretty good. We, we, we work hard to, with the rural fire branch, we're pretty successful on getting money from the state that they manage for the federal government, but, so we've got a lot of equipment. Matter of fact, I was talking with you the other day, and we had to say, "How come we got so much 40 degree equipment?" I said, "Because we're prepared." And you know what? We haven't plotted all this up, you know, and having, having holes and good holes and having the pump pumps and protective equipment, and now we're talking PPE for COVID, well, we've got a whole system of PPE for wildland because that 100-degree temperature we just had in all could have been a wildland, that would have been ugly. We had a lot of people, lots of issues, so we tried to work the best we can, and we've had the support of the town. We are ready to apply for this year's forest grant, and we just got to kind of figure out a, a mask that we need, you know, what do we really need? Looks like it's going to be pretty minimal, because of what we've done in the last few years, and probably going to be just building up some critical PPE things, we need a little light on, like protective safety glasses, they had a thing, you know, same simple thing.
Rusty, let me ask you a question that's not totally related to forest fires, but what are your thoughts on the number of cisterns that Bonset has? You think it's sufficient?
It's, it's, I was pretty instrumental in the whole cistern box coming to town.
Can you add to that? Do you know of any that should be there?
Well, the issue is that we laid out, and I provided, it may still be erected, we went, we worked with the board, latest region, I'm trying to think, it was somebody, there was a team that came out of RCT, I think, and they came down and did a survey of our town. There are many locations where we don't have adequate water regulated, yes. And, and we look around, we have tons of water all over this town, but it's inaccessible, you know, year-round, all right? And so we started looking at it, and, you know, you look at, well, but at the same time, you tend to have a population build up in an area, you don't want to put them nowhere where no one is, unless it's strategic, you know, there may be a strategic reason. But certainly, the concern I've got, by your, up in your neighborhood, is, is, you know, we've got, we've got a dry hydrant that I don't think is functional right now, right now.
We have a lot of those in town.
Yeah, well, they have, and unfortunately, those early dry hydrants put in were okay, but because of sediment and lack of maintenance and, and how they were installed, we think we have a lot of issues. And sometimes we get lucky, we were lucky after a month later on, on one, you know, fire side on the pond out there that's not across from...
Millsfield Lane?
Yeah, that way, yeah. Because they were having to do a dam repair. And so when the water was all out, we were able to have another whole dry hydrant system put in, and because the lake, the pond was dry, we were able to go out with one of those large concrete barriers and put it to on the bottom so we could support the stream that went off the ground. And, and, you know, so we had 360 for access to water to flow in. Hopefully, that's still functioning well, but most of them, that, that was a problem until they were put in, and it was, they were using the best practice we could when you had a pond and you had to take something out, dig a hole and put it in.
Rusty, do you think you could, like, do a report for us and we could kind of evaluate that?
I probably could do that. I mean, I want to check with Sean, make sure I'm not getting on his...
It was a great idea, but it was not well thought out, putting dry hydrants in some of these little farm ponds, because the, the bottom of the farm pond was not stable. Sometimes they were full of sediment to start with.
Right.
Other ones, like the one up on the White Oak Road, that was fine.
Right there, right there, the down beach.
Right, that was great until we had the floods.
Yeah, it's all that this morning.
And then the brook filled in with sand, and now it's virtually useless. And in order to replace it or to reposition it, you'd have to file a dredge and fill permit with, with DES, as how many other permits you'd have to apply for just to excavate the, the sand out of the brook to make puddle deep enough to support the, the intake nozzle. So...
The cisterns are definitely, you know, I have been a strong advocate of cisterns. And having, having the, those that were putting in subdivisions, you know, having them be the supplier of that and providing, I know there were some people that were pretty, that was not a popular thought, but it, it was realistic, you know, you're making the money, we're going to take on that responsibility of trying to provide fire protection in our, and the whole number, just so everybody knows, the 3,000 gallon comes from the NFPA requirement. Okay, well, this may not run, it very much follows the NFPA requirement to provide flow in order to have a qualified water supply. And under, under UL, I mean, yeah, under UL rating.
So I, I just think it would be really beneficial, I think obviously it's something we're interested in, maybe you could work with Sean on where you think we might need them and give us a little report so we can review it. But we have another requirement coming in, so we have to...
Rusty, I'd like to work with you between reestablish a priority list of where we either need cisterns or, or need to tackle the dry hydrant problem, because I agree with you, we, we don't have enough, and the ones, some of the ones we have are just ineffective, so...
Do, do we have more notices or requirements in place already for where those need to be?
They were given by, by your subdivisions, and any, any subdivision that was over three lots required that you provide a cistern in a thousand feet from the cistern to the further block.
Provide a cistern or have an adequate supply close at hand. Case in point, the one out at John Sully's, there's no cistern out there, but you have a dry hydrant just down the road, quarter of a mile.
Well, that would be a planning where you should not lie.
Yes, yes.
I have a standard, but I'll, I'll do that for another day.
Play a word needs to come out. All right, so thank you, George, Rusty, for coming in and sharing everything with us.
My pleasure, and again, I'm, I'm in the phone room, by the way, in front of George.
Hey, John, is it good?
I did, you know, but, you know, I, as they said, I've been just a couple years in the fire department, and I'm not, I'm just a little understanding. So thank you for your time.
So we have an appointment, so I'd like to try to do bids, we've kept George long enough. So can we do that now, please? So George, why don't you just open them?
No, the chairman usually opens them and reads them aloud.
And then typically what happens, if you don't have a lot of time, then I can make copies for everyone, the originals will stay here, and...
Yes, please keep the originals for us.
Then Harvey can review them and, and the board can review them, and I can have them on the agenda for next week, I mean...
So it's separate? So before you do that, should we exclude the last one that was not in time?
I mean, we, it's really up to you guys.
I think if it's a rule or a regulation or a requirement...
I think they've extended it before, it's been done before, since I've sat on this board, they have taken bids after the mandate, just so you know. It's been a practice, right?
And my opinion is that if you allow that bid that came in after the time was up, then you open yourself up for suit by the other two.
All right, well, we've done the other four of them.
Well, yes, and let me add, and let me add that you, I just want to get all the information out there. The board has allowed it and the board has not allowed it, so they've done both. I just want that to be on record.
I sat here and they've done it.
On record, yes.
But it's really, it's, it's the road agents' call, so... George, are you saying don't open this? Control, reclaim option, Peachum, reclaim. Okay, reclaim for Peachum would be 68 cents per square yard at the paving of, and this where I had protections. It was that stupid thing. It was a disgusting sale, a square yard.
Maybe I'll let George read them.
6,545 tons, three-quarter inch WB, 6135 per ton. So the reclaim is 68 per square yard, and the pay is for three-quarter WB would be 6135 per ton. That's wind raise. What's WB?
The wind's a raise.
Okay. Do I prefer a square of the reclaim? So they just gave you a square, they had, I thought we raised it out.
That's how they do it, by the square yard, so much square yard.
Yeah, I thought so. It's partially 52,960 square yards for Peachum. This is just for my net. No, I'm sorry. He's got it all free on here. Peachum, Shackford. I know.
I tried more than my husband's.
I only see Shackford, Peachum, on this one, reclaim, Peachum.
Unless you misunderstood, well, we got to the four homes up here.
It says Peachum Road, approximately ten thousand five hundred by twenty-two, approximately twenty-five thousand seven hundred square feet, reclaim would be that twenty-five thousand square, seven hundred square feet. Tom will find, grade, and compact, get ready for paving, and the pay approximately twenty-five thousand seven hundred square feet at two-point-five inches, approximately three thousand six hundred forty-five tons, three-quarter inch winter base. Shackford Corner Road, approximately eleven thousand one hundred and fifty feet times twenty-two feet, approximately twenty-seven two hundred and sixty square feet, reclaim would be the twenty-seven to sixty, Tom, same thing, Tom will find, grade, and compacts, get ready for paving, paving approximately eight thousand three hundred and fifty feet times twenty-two, which is approximately twenty thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet, approximately two thousand nine hundred tons of three-quarter inch WB. So the job totals for the reclaim option, which he's just looking at Peachum and Shackford, would be approximately reclaim fifty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet at sixty-eight cents per square yard, and the paving would be approximately six thousand five hundred and forty-five tons of three-quarter inch winter base at sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents per ton. And then he says overlay option, Peachum Road, approximately twenty-seven seven hundred, sweep intact, approximately twenty-five seven hundred square feet, approximately one thousand twenty-eight gallons, tack, shim, and whole slash L.
So we don't know if he thinks Holmes is part of Shackford?
We would call him first.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't put anything with that.
Okay, and then the next page talks about shim and overlay. That must be under the overlay option, it's continuing to the next page, so, under overlay option, it talks about the Peachum, the sweep intact, the shim, one thousand ninety-five tons, one-quarter inch mix, overlay approximately two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight tons of three-quarter inch winter base. And then he talks about Shackford Corner, same thing, job totals overlay option would be sixty-four eighty-five per ton for both sweep and tack, the shim and overlay, I guess it's all, the sweep and tack, I guess, the sweep and overlay, sixty-four eighty-five per ton, and I'm going to pass this along.
And pass
Certificate of by all the agents.
Based, and then shim and overlay, so we just see different sources. Okay.
CMI asphalt paving specialist from
GMA.
GMA, from Valentine, Hampshire. Okay, so, we hereby propose to first and tears of the form of a necessary for completion of the project, Barnstead roping proposal Peachum Road and Shackford Corner Road. This proposal is for reclaimation and base asphalt of Peachum and Shackford Corner Road. Peachum Road is from the P slash J at East of Route 28 to P slash J at Lynnwood Drive. Shackford Corner Road is from P slash J at House Number 234 to the end of existing paved road at Holmes Road. The new asphalt had some, right? Only continue to the cold bath road intersection, the new base asphalt back intersection, the reclaim will continue to Holmes Road. So Peachum Road is approximately twenty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety square feet, reclaim existing asphalt, cost is seventy cents per square yard, times the twenty-five seven ninety square foot, eighteen thousand fifty-three dollars. Supply and install asphalt, base course at two-and-a-half inch compacted, approximately three thousand six hundred and sixty tons, costs sixty, sixty-seven fifty per ton, at three thousand six hundred and sixty tons equals two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand fifty, fifty dollars. Total estimates for Peachum is two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand one hundred and three dollars. Shackford Corner Road, approximately twenty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-four square yard total, reclaiming existing asphalt approximately twenty-seven to forty, cost seventy cents per square yard, times the twenty-seven to forty-four would be nineteen thousand seventy dollars and eighty cents. Supply and install the asphalt base course at two-and-a-half inch compacted at two-thousand eight hundred and sixty-five tons, cost sixty-seven fifty per ton, that would be a hundred-and-ninety three thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, total estimated sum of two-hundred-and-twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Notes, traffic controlled by others, grading rolling and wired by others, asphalt pricing based on current NHDOT AC pricing based on July 2020, unit pricing, keyways by contract per foot pricing, trim and joint and driveways, cost six dollars, F, what's that one?
Linear foot.
Linear foot. If requested, supply and install hand paved asphalt, one hundred and forty-five per ton.
And do you want to read Walcott?
Yes, I do.
So I'll let you take your original calls and put in the prices in, um, just a little bit of pointy, but they've been
I have a copy that is on the cards twice.
Yeah, the warning's there.
It's there.
In no case, Rick. Don't get done while
Notice
Okay.
So different of line, the insurance
Cash to it?
These are contracted. So I got, I got one more to do.
Right.
So I have Walcott paving versus shim overlay, so for the one-inch overlay, two-point-five inch shim is sixty-five point five cents per ton. And the two-and-a-half inch pavement would be sixty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents per ton. They're on doing the reclaim, so those are the
Right.
you would compare to the paving quotes.
Right.
That we have, which
Yep.
was pretty neat to me.
Thank you.
This is GMI's, Peachum Road is from the PJ East of Route
Hundred thousand, right there, yeah.
Yeah, the top of the hill, but
Hundred thousand, doesn't matter, does it?
The boost.
Alright.
It's only the people's money, it's not your money.
Alright, you should, listen, who's the questions and the answers?
That's
All the way up?
So do you want this all put on a spreadsheet for the whole board to look at, and George to look at, and then make a decision?
Yeah, I want to see the numbers, want to talk
Okay, alright, and I'll give, anybody that wants copies, I'll make copies, and I'll go over it with you and make sure that
So do we want to wait until next week, do you have to finish this discussion?
I think we have to.
Yep. Okay, so George, are you going to give George copies of those?
I will.
I'll see you.
Yep, I'll be here all day, I'll make sure you go, you don't want them tonight, then?
No, I don't want them. I'm going to
What was that first one?
It was, it was, it was, replay, each one, each one.
And would you like to take them tonight, or you want me to scan them and email them?
Scan and email.
Scan and email, does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, and did you also want to mention, because you got a price from, was it Busby for reclaim?
Yeah.
So that, that should be in there, and is Merrill, oh Merrill is a shoulder, so that's not part of it, but if you would like to read aloud
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
So that should be in there, because that was not the starting
Where all
The only difference, the only difference in this price and Rusty, he was bringing pad foot roller, and he was going to do the centerline layout, so that's why he's a little long.
Okay.
The other one's not doing the pad foot.
This is the new one, Karen?
What's that? That's the new spreadsheet, yes, and I have copies
So I'm looking up Busby's construction from Atkinson, New Hampshire, reclaim existing asphalt on the roadways approximately fifty-two thousand square feet, supply and run pad foot roller and layout is centerline at a dollar oh five square yard, price based on mobilization, traffic control by others, dust control by others, permits by others, not responsible for damage. And then there's, um, there's per hour rates for if we use any of his Is that include man labor, or just bar, or renting equipment?
I would be right here for my
Okay.
Process.
So would we rent his water truck? Do we have our
Yeah, I have ours.
Okay.
Now, I think we could reduce enough water truck, average roller and
Okay. You know where, um, Province Road is that goes towards Ed's house?
Yeah.
So if you take that left to go on Province Road right there, there's a paved, um, walkway that goes down to the water. Have you ever heard of that?
The paved walkway?
There's like a paved section where you could drive down there?
Yeah, I've never, never been down into that, but I know what you're talking about.
What is that, does anybody know, is that Old Bydham Town?
I couldn't hear the question.
So Ed, you know where Province Road is, that if I take a left on, if I go down Province Road to go to your house?
From where?
From, from the town of Barnstead? If I, if I'm driving from the town of Barnstead, and I'm going to Province Road, would I take a left to go on Province Road heading towards your house? Do you know where I am?
By the bridge?
Off 28, over the bridge.
Oh, okay, off of 28, yeah?
Right, on Province Road.
If you take a left
To go on Province Road.
So you're, you're traveling on Route 28.
Mm-hmm.
And I take a left.
That's the Province Road.
Yep. Now, right there on the left-hand side, when you take the left, there's a paved area that goes down to the river.
Yes.
Do we own that?
No.
Who owns it?
Privately owned.
Who owns it?
I don't know, you'd have to check the tax map.
That, this left side of the river is owned by somebody, you'd have to check who owns that, that's where the ramp that goes down.
Right.
And the other side is owned by whoever
Right.
Can you find out who owns that town, please?
Sure.
Uh, I thought it was, we owned it, like, we can use it for something. No.
No.
Can you find out?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's in the flood zone.
Many times I've seen that. I don't care.
Okay, just
I want to ask the mission to cut down some of the trees, so
Okay.
That's why I want to find out who owns it.
You want to cut trees?
Yeah. For what? For signage on the other property, so people can see the signs on the other property. So I wanted to ask whoever owns it if we could do that, if we could cut the trees.
Before you start whittling and chopping, you probably ought to check the DES
Yeah, that's a good thing.
And see what the restrictions are on cutting, uh, trees and so forth, and how close or how far away from a water body you have to be.
Can we just trim them without DES?
Can you what?
Trim them, trim them.
I'm not going to answer that, because I don't work for DES, never have.
Alright, now I'll ask DES, but first I need to ask the holders.
That's true.
I'm not wasting my time with DES.
And did you want to do public input before your 6:15? I think the people are here.
So I'd be put at six seventeen, or eighteen, six eighteen. Do we have any, um, public input? Is anybody watching? Can you, like, just remind people how to do public input one more time, because I know people have a hard time doing public input, so can you just, like, remind them how to do it again?
Yeah, so basically, if I'm on my, if you're on your computer, it can be on the right side, and on the layout, but basically there is a chat box that says Live Chat at the top, and if I say something, jump to type, it'll pop up and show in the chat box.
You need a what to type?
An account.
An account?
A YouTube account, so if you have a, it's an actual person.
So you, can you watch it with a YouTube account? Can you watch this video with a YouTube account?
Yeah, you don't need to, and if you don't have a YouTube account, you can still watch it, you just need a chat.
So, okay, so that's a lot different than I was aware of.
Motel.
So anybody can watch it, but you can't do public input unless you have a YouTube account.
Yeah.
I did not know that.
If you try to type, it would tell you, sign in.
Right, but a lot of people don't have that, that's what I didn't know. So people didn't, okay, so that's a big problem, because I didn't realize that you needed a YouTube account in order to log
If you need your requirement, so you don't get a bunch of spam, it's shut in the chat.
Yeah.
So that's how, so they just want you to sit on their
So, I would suggest then, if anyone has any public comments or concern, they can email Karen at barnstonhall@metrikast.net, and we can address them next week at the meeting if you don't have a YouTube account. Does that make sense? Because that's probably why people are commenting, because I know a couple people said to me, we tried, we can't do it, and I was like, who only said you could?
Well, people are there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Let's see your box again.
Do you have a comment?
I have some other ones, I've written some down for you.
Oh.
I'll send a YouTube account to
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to close public input at 6:20. Can we talk to Denise about getting those minutes updated, because we're on June 23rd, and that's almost a month behind?
I know, she had mentioned that, and I, I don't know if there's a problem, I sent it, sent minutes to her, the most recent ones, but I don't know if there's an issue with them coming up, and I noticed the videos aren't coming up.
Right.
We looked, and it was like June 23rd, I think was the last video.
It was the last time, both of them.
So they're not coming up, is there a, a reason why it's not?
I'll, I emailed Denise Sunday with the link.
Okay.
Usually she responds saying it all set, but she hasn't been so long, so
Okay, yeah, so let me Okay, yeah, so let me, let me check with her, because normally she keeps it right up to date, but, yeah, I was looking for videos and I, right, I'll get in touch with her, and I did mention about the website design, um, she is, she has to work late next week, so she wouldn't be able to come to the twenty-eighth, but, um, certainly she'll come and speak with you about the design for the website, alright?
Okay, um, Karen, do you have anything for us?
No, I think that's it.
Are you lying when I was at?
Yes.
Um, so anything for the agenda review, so George, do you have any updates for us or anything?
Um, nothing really major, the grading is just about done, so we're going to move on to the. Today, we went up and pitched it on the road, we go for the asphalt.
Barnstead.
I'm up there and they.
Did you rip it off?
Asphalt down across the road and, so there's no more problem. So, um.
I told you to rip it off.
I was going to, but, you know, if I can't put some of the salt on that, I'm going to take some in there.
I think, I think if I remember right, the reason it was put in to begin with was because of the spring.
Yeah.
When, when that road turns to mud.
Sure, you'll just have to go into non-public.
You can't, you can't get up that hill. What about Penny, are you filling out?
I'll.
Look at you.
Um, I think I have to shoot.
Okay.
Just one day, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
So I go up on main, it's way.
Okay.
Because I got five calls.
Okay.
That's coming tomorrow.
Alright, yep.
Sorry, brother.
Other than that, that's all I got, and I'm hoping that we, by next Tuesday, get on the weekly. I'm sure I'm going to get called false tomorrow.
Yeah.
There's no reason we shouldn't be, we'll please take that from, and I'm going to talk to R and D and make sure of all of them. But I mean, you probably just made that mistake, but it's all.
Laura, you want to post something on the community and looking for positions, we don't seem to be getting any response.
Alright, Karen, can you just send me the information and I'll post it?
Oh, sure, where are you posting it?
I don't want to be.
Oh, just put, put it out there?
Yeah.
So send the ad, okay.
Yeah.
Let's at least see if we can get some, uh, people in on that.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
George.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks, George.
You're welcome.
It will be, um, number D. Make a note, uh, power under ninety-one dash eight, phone two, room number three D, which is for.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Realistic. Does that count? All those in favor, um.
Aye.
Ed Tasker.
Aye.
Rick Theory.
Aye.
Karen Mann.
Aye.
Diane here.
Aye.
Warren Mar.
Aye.